Oh my god.
Thank you. Well, I'm happy you're excited. I promise you, you'd be able to see yourselves. There are some very important people that want to talk, so we need to make sure we're quiet.
I'm gonna test this. Oh, it works. So, do you know what room you guys are in right now?
Yeah.
What room? Very good. Council Chamber. So, this used to be the library. You guys probably weren't born by the time. I don't know. So, this went under extreme renovations, so I think Ken might talk about that a little bit. Maybe, who knows? But what I'd like to do is, we have two people that want to talk to you really quick. Historical Society? Okay, Historical Society and Leisure Services. So, I'm gonna bring Bren up from Leisure Services, and she's gonna tell you a little bit about that department, and then we'll have the Historical Society tell you guys. And then we have a council meeting. Sound good?
Yeah.
Alright.
Hey, guys! I see some familiar faces here. You feel like you've seen me, Olivia? I think we've seen each other. Well, I'm gonna ask my first question, and I think this may answer why we've seen each other. Who's been to a camp here with the city of Oldsmar? I see, yep, you've been summer camp? There we go. Alright. Who's been to one of our parks? Oh, way more hands.
Areals?
What other parks have you guys been to? Sheffield? Safety Harbor? Veterans Park, that's a good one. It's a very nice park. What's up, Kyle?
I know it's like, I know it's right near, like, the Veterans Park, it's really, it's really quiet.
The beach?
Yeah, there's like a beach there.
Yeah, we call it the beach. That's actually the, the original name of it is Mobley Bayou Wilderness Preserve North Support. Too much to call it, so we just call it the beach. Kylie? Chestnut Park, that's a nice park. That's not one of Oldsmar's, but it is a very nice park. So, that's what Leisure Services does. We get to maintain parks. We keep all of the parklands very pretty here in Oldsmar. We get to put on programs. We get to do all the camps that we have here at the city of Oldsmar. So, the summer camps, the adventure camps, the fishing camps. Olivia, you've been to fishing camp? Yep, see, that's where we've seen each other. And we have our rec center. So, how many parks do we have here in Oldsmar? Who knows that answer? I saw this hand go up. Like five? Close, we do have quite a bit. JJ? Three, it was more than, it's more than five, so you're... Lynn? Eight, actually, it's more than eight. Sophie, is it Sophia? Oh, it's actually more than 10! Jeremiah? 20, oh, it's not quite as much as 20. It is 11. That is one of the coolest things that we have about Oldsmar, is that a huge portion of our little city here is actually dedicated to open parkland. I'm really uncomfortable with seeing myself on camera, so... So, that is something that we enjoy to, we enjoy as part of our job, is we get to take care of so much of our city. And we get to take care of all of the things that you guys get to enjoy, like our parks. And it's such a big, big part of our city. So, one other thing that we do, who enjoys going to our special events? Mr. City Manager, what's your favorite? All of them? Who else has a favorite special event? Is it Brody? What's your favorite? Special event? So, our Celebrate Oldsmar, Christmas Wonderland, Breakfast with Santa. Any of those? You've never been? We're gonna have to get you to one. We get to put on all of those. Sophia? You like the parade? The parade is a really good time. Emma? Christmas Wonderland, that's one of my favorites. I get to put that one on. Zach? You like Christmas Wonderland? Christmas Wonderland? I'm getting a lot of Christmas Wonderland's here, Riley? Breakfast with Santa. Olivia? Christmas Wonderland. What about you, Olivia? You like the parade? I'm seeing a lot of shaking hands. Shaking hands, shaking hands. How do I say your name? Avianca. Christmas Wonderland. Christmas Wonderland, Lyric? Breakfast with Santa. So, we're liking Santa around here, it seems like. Kylie? Christmas Wonderland. What do we like about Christmas Wonderland? The rides? You guys like the slide? The big, big slide, you get to slide down. What's up, Kyle? What's my favorite? It is not any of the ones that you guys said. I really like Halloween. That's my favorite holiday. You like Halloween? Sure, those are good holidays. Let's be real, birthdays are the best holidays ever. But I really enjoy Halloween. That's my favorite. I was dying to ask a question. What's up, Jeremiah? Santa on a water slide? Oh, we might have to replicate that. That sounds like fun. Yes, Mr. Leonard does work at... Adventure Camp is with Ms. Joan, yep. The winter camp and summer camp. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. He does do baseball. Yes, he does. You go to the rec center? How many camps do we have? We have, so every time that you're out of school, so when you have a fall break, a spring break, we have summer camp, so that's three right there. We have winter camp, thank you, Olivia. And then we have three other specialty camps during the summer. We have adventure camp. We have fishing camp, if you like fishing. I don't like touching fish, personally. That's why I love having Ms. Joan. And we also have BMX camp, if you guys enjoy riding down our giant track, which is super cool, right? It is right next to the baseball field, and it is so cool. Your brother went there, oh my gosh! Kyle, I think we got time for one more question. One more question, I'm getting kicked off. What's up, Kyle? What's a rec center? That's a really long definition of awesome. Rec center's awesome. So, my rec center, I've only got one right now that I oversee. And we have a big gym where we have basketball. We have a lot of our programs there. We've got a lot of different games, different fitness classes. Boosball? Not anymore. We had that at our other rec center, but we don't have that rec center anymore. I'm being cut off, Brandon. I'll answer your question on a side note, okay? Alright, I gotta give back to Deb, guys. Thank you so much.
Oh, come on, you... I have 90 seconds here. My name is Ken. I'm from the Historical Society, and there's my other volunteer friend, Bill, in the back. We are volunteers at the Oldsmar Historical Society. Can you guys, guys, tell us what a historical society does? Teach, kind of, we kind of teach the history of Oldsmar, and we collect a lot of... You do? From where? From Oldsmar Elementary?
You are here for the Great American Teaching.
Yes, correct.
You, you tell, you tell, you teach us the, the history of Oldsmar.
I don't have to say anything. I heard the man's name mentioned that founded the town, Ari Olds. And those of you that heard the Great American Teaching know that Oldsmar is named because there's a lot of old people that live here. Can't be, don't some of you live here? So, it can't be, because it's all old people. Yes?
I'm eight years old.
Yes, there you go. Anybody know Spanish? Mar, M-A-R, means? Ocean, by the water, by the sea. So, the man that founded our town was, last name was Olds, O-L-D-S. Mar, ocean, sea, by the water, and we're kind of by...
I know his, I know why it's called Oldsmar, because his name was Francis B. Lightwood.
And Mar?
And Oldsmar, and the Oldsmar has a lot of beaches.
We're by the water, right? We're by the water. Okay, so, we're in the city council, and I see you guys elected a fine staff up here. You got replaced, Mayor. I brought some pictures of old stuff that we collect downstairs in the Historical Society. Anybody recognize this guy? Not really old stuff, but... Here's a mayor from 1974. Here's a mayor from 1981. Really old mayor of Oldsmar, 1985. What about, what about these other three? I think they were all ladies, weren't they? All females? Isn't that interesting that we had, we've had three female mayors in Oldsmar? And they weren't really as old, well, they weren't as... Nah, they were about the same age as our current. So, we're gonna have to schedule the Great American Teaching for Forest Lake sometime. We could come over there unfortunately. History is interesting, because in history, there were a lot of bad things that happened, and a lot of good things that happened. You know, the bad things that happened, we want to learn from and make them better. And like the car that you saw across the street, like Mr. Bill is holding, the car that you saw over at City Hall, that was an Oldsmobile, made by Mr. Olds. And it's a good thing, but we've improved on that a lot, like we need to do with history. Take the good, make them better, remember the bad things that happened, and don't repeat them. Okay? So, thank you for your attention.
Okay, hey, timeout, timeout. Who's ready to start a council meeting? Put our elected officials up on the dais.
Ryan, Zach, Alexis, Ashley, Bella, Dylan, Lavi, Addie.
I can't push. I see you, Kylie. The cameras, I can see them.
Mayor Willett, are you ready to start this council meeting? You know what to do, right? Let's hear it.
I would like to...
Boom, timeout. What'd I tell you to do?
You call to order Tuesday, February 13th, 2018, meeting of Oldsmar Elementary School, City Council. Ryan, Lyric, Avery, and Olivia, if you would like to come forward and lead us in the pledge allegiance, please stand.
Ryan, Avery, Lyric, and Olivia, right in front.
Everybody, guys, everybody.
United States, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have the citizens' open forum. We only have a couple of rules. If you wish to address the council, please remember to state your name and address. Remember to keep your comments to only five minutes. Having said that, would anyone like to address the council?
Good morning, Oldsmar City Council. My name is Finn Montrestelle. I live at 123 Pleasant Avenue, Oldsmar. I'm here today with a concern about my neighbor's chickens. 13 years ago, it was quite a beautiful, family-friendly area to live, work, and play. Now the chickens are running that. Why has the city allowed foreign animals in residential areas? I am an animal lover. I have a dog, and other neighbors in my area also have any genomic stick, house pets. Chickens are not pets at all. The barn. Walking and clucking. I do not like walking up to the sound of Cockadoodledoo every morning. Every morning. My backyard sounds like a barn full of their noises. I can't even relax in my privacy of my own yard with them carrying on all of the time. Then, there's the issue, the smell. Of a smell. I shouldn't have to wear a notebook to go out to my pool. Which brings me to another reason. There are full things I need to go, feathers. They're everywhere. It's like a steady rain of feathers flying around the place. They're in my pool, stuck in my car, to my car, in, in my garden, blowing in my door when I go out, go in, inside. I sincerely thank you for your time and hope that the council will change the zoning laws for chickens in residential area, um, neighborhoods.
What's up, City Council? My name is Amy Rouse. My beautiful address is 456 Ocean Drive, Oldsmar. So, the thing is, I'm really into jet skiing. All my friends are too. Who doesn't love jet skiing? So, one day, my friend and I got this outrageous idea, and we were like, hey, we should start a jet ski rental business for my dock, so that more peeps can get into, in on the action. Tampa Bay is outrageous to swim around in. So, my dock is 190 feet long and could hold a whole bunch of jet skis. We could be like, build a bay with jet skiers. That would be totally awesome, right? So, so I just need a business permit to rent those out of my 195-foot dock. It could be totally, I could totally pick up helmets and life jackets, so everybody could be super safe. Safety first. I could, I can even let all of the cool council dudes come out anytime you want to go cruising. Wouldn't that be super fun? I could be like, it could be like an Oldsmar City Council jet ski party. I'm, I'm thinking like, we could make a super chill hours of operation. Not too early, don't want to wake up the lake sleepers, and plus, I'm a lake sleeper too. And then, we could say like, everyone has to return my, their jet skis to my awesome 195-foot dock by sundown. Just think of all the business the local restaurants will get to. I'm thinking of totally hungry people looking for a place after swimming around the bay on jet skis, a jet ski. I hope you're digging my dream and will approve the business permit for me. Thanks and goodbye.
Now we will have special awards.
Thank you for giving the third grade class the opportunity to present a special award today. We would like to, we would like to call for Turtle Courier. On behalf... On behalf of the third grade class at Oldsmar Elementary, we would like to present you with a certificate of excellent. Miss Courier, we, we, the third grade class of Oldsmar Elementary School truly appreciate everything that you do to help us grow as learners. Your time, compassion, and dum-dums encourage us each day.
Um, it's on the back. I'm saying this part.
Some members of the third grade class of Oldsmar Elementary have proposed to change the school mascot. Currently, the school mascot is an owl. If approved to change the school, we'll proceed by voting on a new school animal mascot. We will now hear from a few school representatives on this topic.
Good morning, council members. My name is Kendall Long, and I'm the principal of Oldsmar Elementary School.
My name is Ashlyn Nostrick. I'm the vice principal of Oldsmar Elementary School.
We feel that we need to, we feel that the school mascot should be changed.
Our school mascot has been the owl for a really long time. We feel that it does not currently represent our school's strength.
Our staff and our students make up a strong part of the community and should be represented by an animal that shows our strength for learning.
Our school mascot should be a tiger or an elephant, not now.
Our staff and our students also have an issue with our current school mascot, because it's hard to find owl things.
They're nocturnal after all, so unless you're shopping at night, it's almost impossible.
It's important that our staff and our students be able to have accessories for school days and events.
Thank you for listening to our opinion about why we should change the school mascot.
We hope that the council members and citizens of Oldsmar Elementary School will take our opinion into consideration when you make your decision.
Are there any questions or concerns about the mascot change from the council members?
Good morning, council members. My name is Daniel Telnitz.
My name is Nathan Urbino. But the school should stay an owl. Our school mascot has been the owl for a really long time. If you change the mascot, it will change Oldsmar Elementary history. The owl is printed all over, all over the, our school. It is an important symbol for all, all the community and the students at Oldsmar Elementary.
It matches O for owls and O for Oldsmart. Oldsmart owl just makes sense.
It's important to consider how much money that we would have to spend to change the school mascot.
We would need new signs in and around the school. We would need new shirts, yearbooks, and even new car magnets.
Where would we get this money? Would we have enough to pay for all of it? We would need... Thank you for listening to our concerns about why it's important not to change the school mascot.
We hope that you, that the council members and citizens of Oldsmar Elementary School will take your opinion to consider, consideration when you make your decision.
Are there any questions or concerns about the mascot change from the council members?
I would like to, for, I would like for the council to take into consideration the fact that the school mascot represents all of Oldsmar Elementary, not just the third grade class. Also, it is important that we think about what events the mascot would be a part of.
Just to recap, we have been given a lot of information from both sides. I agree with Dylan that we need to keep in mind that our decision affects Oldsmar Elementary School as a whole, not just the third grade class. Another, another animal representing, representing our school may impact our school in a positive way. It may also affect the community that we have built with this symbol.
Thank you for your concerns. We will now move to voting.
Please be silent as we vote. Everyone gets one vote, and you show their vote by raising their hand. Please only raise one hand. The clerk will count the votes. Please keep your hand raised high until voting has been completed. Are there any questions? Please raise your hand if you approve of the mascot to be changed. Please raise your hand if you do not approve of the mascot to be changed.
Where do I stop, right here? Thank you for all your- Cooperation. Thank you for all your-
Cooperation.
Cooperation. Before we close our meeting and announce the results, the third grade class would like to thank Mayor Bevis and the city council members for our opportunity to, to be here today. We would also like to thank Deb Polly for working hard with our teachers and all of the city teachers, employees that made today fun and educational for us. Finally, thank you chaperones and teachers for your guidance and support.
The results are, and with 70 votes, the third grade class of Oldsmar Elementary has chosen to keep the school mascot. Meeting adjourned.